Special joint meeting of the Carson City School Board and the Carson City Board of Supervisors. For the record, today is Thursday, January 18, 2018, 6:00. Location of the meeting, we are in the C.R. Room at the Community Center. And with that, we'll call this meeting to order. And Ryan, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Yep. All rise.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And moving right along to Agenda Item Number Two, Adoption of Agenda as Submitted. Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Motion about three seconds. Who made the motion? Okay, and second?
Grossman.
Laurel.
Okay, Laurel, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Let's have a discussion on our motion real quick so we can clarify some things.
Yes.
There's on item 40A, it says possible action. This is the issue with the school resource officers. It could be mostly informational. I don't anticipate either board making, I can't speak for the other school board, but before we take an action on this, it has to come before a regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. But it's an informational item. We look here to talk, everybody to see what's going on, okay? Not report and stuff like that, but just want everybody to know that's what's going to happen here tonight. So with that, our board okay with the agenda? All right, we're done.
Okay, Agenda Item Number Three, Public Comment. And comments may be made by members of the public on any matter within the authority of this board. Although members of the board may respond to questions and discuss issues raised during public comment, no action may be taken on such a matter until the matter is placed on the agenda for action at a meeting of the board. In making public comment, speakers are asked to sign in, speak into the microphone at the podium, identify themselves for the record, respect any time limitations imposed, and not simply repeat comments made by others. This is for discussion only. So, any public com-
Sina.
Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. I just came over from the library and I just wanted to make a public comment. Sina Lloyd, Carson City Library Director, for the record, that we are hoping to soft open on the 29th of January, and then we'll have our grand reopening on the 16th of February from 4:00 to 7:00 P.M.
You're sure about that now?
The grand reopening we're sure about. We have staff, yeah, our soft opening, once we have books on shelves, we'll be open to the public. So, that's where we're at.
You've been badly missed.
Yes. Thank you.
Other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four, which are the welcoming remarks, both by myself and Mayor Kroll. Mayor, you wanna-
You go ahead and start. You go ahead and start.
God.
You're starting, you gotta-
He's in charge.
Yeah. I've been in charge all day. I'm tired, man. Somebody else be in charge.
All right, let me just, just kinda sit back, talk to every one in the room that, and go back about, we're into our fifth year on this joint resolution, and all of the respective board members have a copy. And I thought I would just start the comments by maybe going back in time and seeing what's been done up to this point. And then put in perspective, you know, what we've got coming out tonight, the GATE information, the SROs, ACT, Advanced Placement Courses, Millennium Scholarships. For these to make sense, if you were look at the, if you would just take this joint resolution, and I went through it again today, a lot of terms are in there. Our community, quality of life, and going back, I mean, we adopted this for the benefit of not only the students, but for the quality of life, meaning that of students, we increase their achievement, the quality of life would also be increased here. So let me, let me just take a few minutes and go back and just take some, put some comments on the record here. The purpose of the school board is student achievement and success in life for all students. And keep in mind, all, we've all gone through schools and a lot of kids don't make it for one reason or another. But, starting in 2011, 2012, the community came forward here in Carson and said, "We'd like all students to make it." And we did. We had a series of meetings, and really, we came up with a shared, the Carson City School District came up with a shared vision for education for this community, you know, states, "Our community empowers tomorrow's innovators, leaders, and thinkers." And you think of that vision. It didn't say the Carson City School District empowers, it says, "Our community empowers." And how do we do it? Again, the community came forward and said, "We do it in partnership with the community." Meaning, through these meetings, not only did the community want something, but they said, "We'll help you do it." And I thought that was something special. So, the school board, we as a board adopted that vision, our strategic plan, with the idea that it is our community, it is their community. It became a shared vision for education in Carson City. But the joint resolution came in, and that came in in 2013, so we've been in, this is our fifth year. And I'd just like to state a few of the things that, you know, that we've done jointly that have worked out really, really well. And I'm not stating everything, I'm just gonna cite a few, a few examples. Safety, you see that in the joint resolution. Well, Sheriff's Office, you know, they've done some pretty amazing things. I'm particularly impressed with the Cops and Kids Day that goes on, and that really is, that's a special day for learning, respect for law enforcement, and it goes both ways, parents and kids alike. The Sheriff's Resource Officers that are in our middle schools and high school, you know, I can't say I know good things. To me, what has happened is our kids have taken it to another level of respect, so there's a respect going back and forth in the schools and outside the schools now for law enforcement. And, and I know we're gonna be talking about that later, but I just wanted to point out some things since this joint resolution went into place. Now, I see one of my most favorite people here with a DARE program. The DARE program was in place, but it was expanded during this period of time. It was formerly in elementary schools, and now it went to the, to the middle schools. But in addition, it wasn't just talking about, say, no drugs and alcohol. Lisa Davis was able to incorporate character counts, how to be a good citizen, how to be trustworthy, how to be honest. And it was just amazing, you know, how that program has expanded. And again, it's another thing that, that through the Sheriff's Office, this thing has come about. The sheriff has even got a junior cadets program going, where he takes kids, and they weren't about law enforcement. And all of this is, is just kind of expanding each day. The fire department still, to the same, we're in a joint agreement on the EMS and EMT training. They work with our health science people, and they do this, they give the kids, right, hands-on, on the truck, what it takes. But it, it's worked out, you know, amazingly. The parks and rec, just before and after schools, you know, programs to keep kids safe, programs at the MAC, which are now, you know, kind of nice because they even expanded it to incorporate the Boys and Girls Club. It's all our youth, and it just keeps going. And then, we continue with sharing facilities between the school district and the, and the city. One thing that's particularly, I think is particularly noteworthy, during this period of time, the Board of Supervisors took on and created, I'm gonna call it the Arts Initiative, connecting, you know, the visual, literary, and performing arts, of which now our kids are part of this whole movement within the city, and it's become something, you know, very special. And I'm going, you know, how nice is that, that we work together and then this comes out of this thing. And the library, which I, I still give the name Innovative Learning Center, because it's not just a library. But the staff, one example, they work, Sina, they work with teachers and parents and our students, they just encourage the students to combine academic achievement with the power of imagination. And they do this using the technology at the library. And we, it's taken the kids to another level. And again, through the joint resolution, this continues, and this is strong, probably stronger than most communities. Then we go on, and if you look at the, the joint resolution, it says something about, here are students, our community desires that our students have a strong academic foundation in the core subjects. And we did that in the Carson City School District, and we went in the classroom with a realization, this came after our strategic plan, that all kids, you know, they, they don't learn at the same rate, or the same pace, or in the same way. And so Dr. Steve Perder, along with our superintendent, you know, something had to change. Our community wanted this. Now, we want all students, and not just standard lecture, and then, if you pass, you pass, if you don't, you know, you're on your way out. Well, you know, this, this came in, in a way to say, all right, how do we do this? And then, you're aware, the board is aware, that with community input, we applied for the federal grant, the Race to the Top, and we came out successful in that. Well, that was at the start of this joint resolution, it's now complete. Things are in place now to address just that. How do, in the middle schools and high schools, how do we get to every student recognizing, all students don't learn in the same way and at the same rate? And, and this thing has been put in place, and this is where our, our teachers, that you don't realize what great teachers we have here, in the middle schools and high schools, came together to develop a curriculum that was universal across all grades, and it was based upon, every kid gets the same information in math and science, so K-12 was foundational, and every kid was, you know, on the way, given the same way, or the same information. But the kids were then given learning guides to go with it. So, in three-week increments, they, you know, they, there are target, or learning goals, there were essential questions asked, and a way for the kids to assess themselves. And if they weren't there, instead of at the end of semester, you fail, at the end of three weeks, there's a support team that jumps in to get these kids, to give them additional help. In addition, you know, there's kids that want more, and then you'll hear about that a little bit later on our AP programs. But it covered both ends. And this was done after four and a half years, as I said, of teacher involvement, major assessment models put in place, but all for the benefit of the kids. We are gonna get to those kids, you know, they're not gonna be, they're not gonna be failing here. In fact, it's worked out so well, right now, that we're now adopting it and creating it in our elementary schools. So every elementary school kid will have a learning guide, of which their parents can join in, and this whole academic environment, it just raises the level of, of learning for these kids. Then we go into the, you know, beyond the classroom. What happened? You know, our community, our community wanted this, they wanted to, to help. Well, we started this, in the adoption of our initial strategic plan, the number of community partners that we had was 20. As of two days ago, we have 210. These are businesses, government agencies, cultural organizations, libraries, higher ed, that have all jumped in and said, "We wanna help your students learn." So they've committed. I mean, this is, this is just amazing. And then the benefits, what's happening now, is we get expanded technology literacy for our kids. Global awareness, our manufacturers, all do business around the world, they're jumping in. Why you need to know the cultures of other nations? We're in business now, and we're gonna help you learn that. But it gives them also that real-world experience. It's applied learning, which means, I'm taking geometry and trig, now what does that mean to me? These businesses have offered, this come out, we'll go through the design and development process of, of a product, and we'll apply the geometry and trig, and you'll see the end product. It's applied learning, it's hands-on. This is coming through our community as part of this joint resolution. Now, I know I've taken a little bit of time, but the end result is, and I can tell the board members now, quality of life, we can now say we have exceptional schools. Not good, we've always had good schools. We now have exceptional schools. We've raised the bar. And again, when, you know, I remember when I was a board member, I, we'd calls from people from out of town who wanna know a little bit about the school system, and I refer them on. But it's, it means something to people of to why they would wanna move here and stay here. And I think through this whole process, the joint resolution, and what we've done, we are really beginning to align our community through education. And it's not perfect, we're not aligned yet, but, but it's moving in that direction. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to get those comments on the record, just for a little back, background for tonight's meeting.
That's pretty hard to follow. Pretty hard to follow, so what do we say? Let me just, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Let me just, I'll kinda, let me just say this, there's a reason why our founding fathers in this country stressed education so much, and that's because education is the core of our democracy. I mean, without, without an educated society, we don't have a democracy, we don't have a country. And we bring that right back down to our community. I know our board, and I know the school board is, is, is committed to building a quality of life in Carson City that is unparalleled, which to me means a community that is sustainable for the 21st century. That requires us to have not only just an alignment between the school board and the Board of Supervisors, but a shared commitment that our community's gonna go forward in terms of the education of our young folks, and to make sure that we have an infrastructure in Carson City that is promotes and supports people with families who are coming here with kids, who wanna come here with kids and raise kids in one of the best locations in the United States and get a good education. And I will just kinda close this by saying, I've spoken to a couple kindergarten classes in the last few weeks here, and they all wanna know what the mayor does, and that's hard to say. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what the mayor does. I've been here for nine years, I'm still trying to find out.
We were wondering too.
You hear that? I put up with this all day today, and now I come tonight and have to do that. But you know, what I tell them is, you know, you know, I can talk to you about, you know, mayor's job and all that. So, but you know, the most important job in the world, in my view, is a teacher. Because unless you've got people on the ground teaching kids, you know, how to make the right choices, how to learn how to live their life, how to get, gain skills on, on, on living, on how to do well in this world, we don't have a community, we don't have a country. And so, to me, I'll just end with this, I do think that the most important job that we have are teachers. Because they are the core of what makes this world a better place to live. They're the source of all good things in this country. Thanks. So with that, you know.
We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five, and like the mayor said, this is for discussion only, but it is set up for discussion of possible action, to approve the continuation of the Department of Justice Community Oriented Police, Policing Services Grant 2015-U-M-WX-0049 in shared program cost between Carson City and the Carson City School District. And again, it's for discussion only. Sheriff?
You about ready? Great intros, both of ya. Great intros. And thank you for having us here today. This, this meeting is, is a whole lot more than, than what a lot of people may think. You have three major entities here that have a major impact on, on the community welfare and such. And I would point out that, that as I've said very commonly recently, our students are a reflection on this community. And the leadership in this community reflects right straight back to those students. And, and so it's vital that, that on a periodic basis, that we do come together and we discuss how we are doing. When we speak about the SRO program, and we're gonna give a slight overview of how we're doing on the program, as it's entering into its third year now, it's very important to keep in mind one thing. The SRO program is not just the officers who stand behind me, that I will be introducing here in a few moments, but the SRO program is not complete without the schools. The administrators, the teachers, the counselors, everyone involved. It's an entirety of a program. So, when we, as we go through this, realize that with these two, two boards here, if you will, if you allow me to use those terms, these two boards are a reflection on the schools, how a community works together in partnership and resolves issues, or at least addresses its challenges. And, and just, as we begin to start, I do wanna reflect on one thing. Mr. Stokes had a meeting at the high school that I was walking out of late one evening, and, and there was a, a large banner up at the high school in Senator Square. And what that, the banner said across the top was, "I'm thankful for." And this is our high school students. And, and I stopped, it was about 8:00 at night before Mr. Stokes let us go home for the evening, and, and I stopped and I looked at that, and I was amazed how many kids put notes up on that board that they were thankful for accountability. I was absolutely amazed by it, and that, that really moved me, because that's what this is right here tonight. We do wanna hold every, all of our programs accountable for achieving its goals, and, and where we miss it, we wanna adjust it to those, to those opportunities. So with that, as we begin the presentation, we are proud. The school program, as it's entering into its third year of four, actually four years, we are engaged in every school in this school district. And, and so we'll turn it over to Casey and AJ, and we can move along here.
Okay. Casey Otto, Department Business Manager for the Carson City Sheriff's Office. So, the next slide we have here is just a brief 30,000-foot overview of the grant itself. It's a 36-month grant, salary-only grant. The original award amount was $375,000. The award date was October 1st of '15. The scheduled end date was September 30th of this year. It will be extended to mid-December. We've already spoken with the department about that. So.
If your eyes can, ooh, sorry. If your eyes can pull these numbers out, you'll have 2010 vision. So, these were the, this is the original budget from the grant as it was submitted, so the estimated salaries and benefit costs. And then, as you go across, you can see the, the federal percentage that would be covered. So for example, in year one, you see 75% under federal percentage. The matching percentage is a percentage that we locally were responsible to cover. So, over the three years, those percentages changed, and you end up with shifting costs over that time. But again, the $375,000 at the bottom. There are some costs that were considered unallowable according to the feds when submitting that grant, so those were represented there just separately. But then it breaks down at the bottom, what those total costs were expected to be, and how it split over the three years.
I have been told that I over bean count. Sorry, I've been told I over bean count. So the next slide is just a basic overview. It's just a graph, this is where we sat first year, second year, and the current year for the grant and our totals. So, just a real brief overview.
So where we at? We're moving right along now. I would hope that, that the folks behind me, 'cause I can't, I don't have eyes behind my head, as I introduce them, I hope that they will stand. The Sheriff's Office Program in support of the schools, not just the SROs, but the entire schools program. These officers are here today with, or this evening with me. It is, the program is supervised by Sergeant Earl Mays. Carson City Deputy Dean Williams is assigned to Carson High School, Deputy Jared Adams is assigned to Carson Middle School, and Deputy Liz Lopez is assigned to Eagle Valley Middle School. For, for the, the single person who probably needs the least introduction is Lisa Davis. Lisa has been on with us for DARE and many, many, many other opportunities that engage the children, as you mentioned in your, your opening comments throughout this community. Lisa has with her many of her volunteers today, and some of the leadership students, the stellar squad, that volunteer countless hours with her every single week. It is important, as we, as we enter into this, this third year, that I, that I do well inform you, that the standards of the assignments for our school resource officers follow with the National Association of School Resource Officers. That, that organization provides us with best guidance, best practice, policies, and procedures that we can follow when we are in our school environments. That is a challenge, because on one side, we, I have a Board of Supervisors who has funded a Sheriff's Office, a law enforcement organization, and on the other side, we're working in a very delicate environment, and that's our schools with our children. And so we look for those, those organizations that can provide us the most amount of assistance. And, and I would note that this year, the National School Safety Conference is being held at the Prep Mill Inn up in Reno on June 24th and 29th. Why do I bring this up? This is a national conference, and it is very common that you find board members of each respective side attending these conferences, so they can get a better understanding of why and how law enforcement is operating inside of our schools and the practices that they are, they are doing. So I thank you for that. Highlights of the program, it is functioning very, very well. I believe that it is maturing very well. And I think that that's the, the primary point tonight. Our officers are engaged not just on the properties of the schools, but around the schools as well. The best example of that is probably Mills Park, as most of you know. Many of our high school students exit that, that environment and go straight into the parks. So our school resource officers do extend beyond the schools, but as well into those environments, and going and coming from the schools. I'm very, very pleased that with the cooperation of the schools, administrators, and counselors and such, that we have been able to respond around the clock, around the clock, to emergency circumstances, whether they be horrific accidents that, that have occurred in this past year, or threats that have been conveyed and relayed to the officers. Each of the schools and each of the SROs has stood up to those challenges, regardless of what time of day it is, and, and addressed those issues on the spot. And, and I'll tell ya, the most recent one that I had, the, I guess, the opportunity to address, I was down in Las Vegas when, when a threat was at least perceived here in Carson City, and the totality of the response by the schools and the officers alike was just absolutely amazing. There's nothing, no, no short words other than that. And, and so as we enter into the third year, I would call it our maturity year. I think that we are on very, very firm ground. I think that we have excellent officers in, in these environments, and I look forward to- I think that we have excellent officers in these environments, and I look forward to a very, very successful year. Any questions at all?
Can I share my story about you, Sheriff?
Sounds loaded.
You know, I turned, I turned this color once you did.
Well, the sheriff mentioned, you know, about an incident that when he was gone, about how our, you know, our school and our school resource officers turned to prevent issues, serious issues, happening. Some of you have heard me say this, but I'd like to give a personal example of what happens here. The sheriff and I are both, and I think probably others are on the Circles Board of Directors. Circles, as you know, is a local nonprofit that designed to try and give those in poverty a hand up out of structural poverty into making decisions and right and moving them out of poverty. And one of those, one of the mothers that had been through Circles had an 11-year-old boy who was having, the mother was losing control over, and was distraught. The mother was just distraught because the boy had dropped out of school, dropped out of the Boys and Girls Club, was being rude to the mother, and the mother was at what's end. The mother, her ally in the Circles program, just under me, Sally Zola, in my office, called my office, or called Sally, and said, you know, "I'm having all these troubles with my son. He's being bullied at school," and all those things. And this kid was really getting ready to go off the deep end. Sally calls the sheriff, and within 24 hours, the sheriff had the sheriff's office, the school resource officers, the school superintendent, our juvenile probation officers, health officers, all looking after this kid. One 11-year-old kid, just one 11-year-old kid. And within 24 hours, that kid was back at school, back in the Boys and Girls Club, and walked out with the sheriff's telephone, cellphone number in his pocket and said, "If you ever have a problem, call me." That's what the benefit of having school resource officers is. That's what our cops do in this community. And that's a real-life example that really happened. This kid, 11-years-old, is now on the right track. I mean, he's still, you know, he's a kid. He's having difficulties going through life. But it brought him back off the precipice. It brought him back off of jumping off the cliff, and that's what Carson City's about. And I would ask anybody in the room, what other community do you know of 55,000-plus people, 55,000-plus individuals, where one 11-year-old kid can end up with the sheriff's personal cellphone number in his pocket and said, "If you got a problem, call me"? You don't find that anywhere else. And that's what the school resource officers do. I'm sure they do the same thing. It's a valuable program, in my opinion. So thanks for letting me share a little story there, an actual story.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And, you know, reflection back, that's what this three-way meeting, if you will, is about. The reflection that we're providing back to our kids, that we actually do care. Mr. Swirzick, your comments, we're dead on. We care about the kids in this community. And I'll pick on Karen. She has a local business. These kids coming out of that high school are the future of this community. They're the employees and the employers. And for many of us here, Mr. Mayor, you know, we grew up in this town, and we've gone on, taken on our positions, and I think it's important that we never let our children down.
So maybe just a general question, and maybe I can ask, it doesn't matter which officer, school resource officer comes up. I'd actually like to ask one of them a question. Be brave. But I promise not to be too hard on you.
Jared brought Kimberly along, so.
I know. If I talk to her, she might get me. So in general, can you tell me what a typical day is for you as an SRO officer?
Jared Adams, School Resource Officer. That is a very complex question. It entails numerous things. I'm assigned to Carson Middle School, but the three SROs cover all the schools. In a typical day, I would start and go to Carson Middle School. I go to the area of the cafeteria as the kids come into school. All the schools have programs going before school. Kids start showing up sometimes before 7:00. They get sometimes dropped off while it's still dark. And I could have several hundred kids in the lunch area of Carson Middle School. I go there, supervise, you know, and try to associate with them, build that rapport, hang out with them, you know, in the mornings, and they, when the bell rings, they go into their first period. I assist with any discipline issues that come up. The deans at the middle schools will contact me if things come up. Then with all the other schools, I could get phone calls at any time to assist at any of the elementary schools, or assist at the other middle school or the high school. And the numerous programs, we'll go cover Dare graduations. We get involved in dances, assemblies. We try to be there and be part of. It's, I hope that answers your question. There's just a whole lot to it. We can go and do certain things where we try to build rapport, and I had a local business assist with giving us pizzas with Partnership Carson City. We went around on New Years. And I think we made contact with over 200 kids, 18 different groups, and brought them pizzas and just checked on what they were doing on New Years, made sure it was drug and alcohol-free. We do a lot of teaching at the high school. Deputy Williams, who's currently out of town, gets in, builds a rapport, teaches, you know, about law enforcement, different things to the kids, and works with them. We're currently teaching marijuana awareness classes to the high school athletes. The next one, I believe, is scheduled February 22nd to let them know about prevention and awareness. The last class had over 100 kids. The next one has 100-plus kids scheduled. So it varies, numerous, numerous things. I hope that answers the question.
So maybe if I could just follow up a little bit, what's your favorite part of the job, and what's your least favorite part of the job? I'm really trying to get the community to, yeah, pass. Good job.
I think my favorite part of the job is just hanging out with the kids. A lot of them are just so amazed that, you know, just hanging out with the cops, them seeing that we're normal people, we're not just people that take juveniles and adults to jail. We're there to hang out with them, be their counselors, their mentors. The worst part is obviously dealing with them in a criminal matter, having to take them to juvenile, and just that criminal behavior is my least favorite.
If you don't mind, I'd also like to answer that. My favorite part is the rapport with the kids. When you go out with them when they're having lunch. I'll have numerous come up, numerous kids come up, you know, they call me by my first name. They ask me what's going on, you know, I talk to them. And then later on, when they have problems, they come to me. Because we socialize and hang out, so to speak, you know, they'll come up to me. If something's bothering them, they'll give us information about kids', you know, drug issues, other issues going on that I can follow up on at a later date. And, you know, the relationship we build with them goes as far, if I'm in the supermarket shopping on the weekend with my wife, you know, we see some kid, they'll see me out of uniform, and then their face will light up because they'll figure out who I am. You know, I'll get swarmed in a grocery store. Just the relationship we have with the kids is, it's a neat thing.
Can I ask a question? In terms of marijuana awareness, just because I have grandkids that go to school in a different city, and I know what their experiences are in middle school, is marijuana awareness going to be taught in the middle school to athletes? Because I know there's a problem in some other schools in another jurisdiction with regards to that.
Lisa's programs, as you, as all of you know, target the elementary school level. That is her primary target, but they do extend well into the other schools, the middle schools as well, in her ongoing training efforts. We have many activities that are targeted in that environment. And I think I've said this before, I think that the middle school environment, which ironically are sitting on each side of me, needs to be our target zone. Those are when our children, and I use that word loosely, but they are, those are, that's when our children are at their most susceptible period in their lives. They've, they're being given the greatest amount of latitude by their parents. They no longer have one teacher all day long. They're coming and going to school very often on their own. And so I think that that is an area where Lisa has been extraordinarily successful at continuing that contact with the kids that she's already established in the elementary school zones. So we do have events such as the cops and kids, the spaghetti dinners, the street fairs, and the red ribbon weeks, and all of these things that continue that process of, as you said, good decision-making characteristics amongst our kids. It's not all about marijuana. It's about good decisions in life. God knows that, you know, we stumble along the way, even as adults. But it's about making the best of those decisions. Lisa just does a phenomenal job. I couldn't imagine a world without her.
I just want to thank all the resource officers for being a part of the schools. It's a, it's an expense that the city and the school board and school district absorbs to a degree, and it's always hard, as you know, to, you know, there's always more expenses than our money coming into the accounts. And when you get a program that's worthwhile, such as this, it's easy to absorb that kind of money. Everybody's in favor of making sure it goes. And so I really just want to extend a thank you to everybody for all the hard work you do. I get an opportunity to speak with not just my kids, I have three kids, two now that are in college and one at the high school, but through their friends and their siblings, I indirectly can kind of check up on what the perception of the resource officers are, you know, through the eyes of the kids. And without, with very rare exception, they're all, they all really appreciate the resource officers. They like the program. I ask if the police are intimidating. They say just the opposite, they're approachable, very easy to talk to. I think the kids feel a level of safety, of course, and really, just all around, it's a good program, and I think the kids really appreciate it. So, thank you.
And if I could close that comment with, again, how I started, this program is, it's absolutely essential. The program's not complete without the school administrations. And the cooperations that these folks have with the administrators, the allowance to have offices or office space on the campuses, it builds trust. And folks, that's something that's very difficult in this world today. But building trust is what allows that to occur. And so when you, your appreciation to them goes as well over to the schools themselves. Thank you.
So I have to ask the one question I get asked the most. What do you guys do during the summer when the schools are out, though?
With, summer school usually lasts from the 1st of June till beginning of July. I'm not sure the exact number, there's several hundred kids in there. And so we keep one SRO at the location of the summer school to help supervise that and continue with that. And then we have numerous activities we do. One of them is called the Wilderness Program that the Juvenile Probation Department runs, and a deputy will do the activities and so forth that the Wilderness Program does. And the kids who are on probation and in the Wilderness Program, that helps that deputy build a rapport and work with juvenile probation with those kids. The program I manage is the enforcing underage drinking laws, and I partnership with Partnership Carson City. And we do the alcohol compliance checks, the shoulder taps. We go to our three-mile jurisdiction of Lake Tahoe and check that during the summer. A lot of marijuana, alcohol issues with the juveniles up there. You know, Mills Park with the carnival, those type of things. Anything juvenile-related, information that we'll get about juvenile parties, about drug and alcohol abuse, we follow up on that after school hours or, you know, in the summer. So things similar to that.
They are working year-round. We try to target this group to any issues that deal with juveniles all the way throughout the year. And they've been pretty successful at staying linked well to the kids.
Sheriff, thank you. Thank you very much. And I know we'll, in our respective boards, get this back, you know, for the action part of this. But again, to all of the deputies, thank you so much. I mean, it's really, I appreciate the football games. I get a little scared just walking out of there. I go, whoa.
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you. We'll continue on to Agenda Item Number Six. This informational update on the number of Millennium Scholarships awarded in the Carson City School Districts to students of Carson High and Pioneer High for the 2016-17 school year. Sue?
Suzie Kima for the record, Associate Superintendent for the Carson City School District. It is my pleasure to present to you, Mr. Swirzick and Mayor, Mr. Kroll, the number of Carson City School Districts Millennium Scholarship Award recipients for the Carson City School District. This scholarship is also known as the Governor Gwynn Millennium Scholarship. I'm going to give you a little bit of background before I go into the one slide that I have for tonight. This scholarship offers Nevada high school graduates free or reduced tuition for in-state universities and colleges like UNR. And if you look at the back of your board packet on the handout that I have provided for you, it lists all the qualifying institutions. So it can be from large universities such as University of Nevada-Las Vegas, UNLV, or UNR, to those in our own backyard, such as WNC, TMCC, and Sierra Nevada College. If you go through the board packet and you look at the handout that's in there, the qualifications, what you need to do to qualify for Millennium Scholarship is, one, you need to graduate from a public or private school in the state of Nevada. Two, you must have a GPA, a grade point average of 3.25. Next, you must make sure that you meet the course requirements, and you must be a resident of Nevada for at least two years. And then for the class of 2016 and beyond, you must, you must take and score a 21 or higher on the combined score for the ACT. Or for the SAT, you must have a score of 1070 for the combined reading, writing, or math score. So that's the background of the Millennium Scholarship. So now let's take a look at some data. The data that I have before you on the screen is Carson High School's data. Instead of what I have, I did not put in Pioneer's data, but I will talk about Pioneer's data alongside it. I didn't want to skew one or the other school's data before you. So you've got four years of graduation classes up there on that data. You can see the size of Carson High School's graduation classes for the last 40 years. You can see the numbers of Millennium Scholarship recipients, and then you can see the percentage of the qualifiers. So if you look, you can see that the first, in 2000, from 2013 to 2015, we were at 32% of our students earning the Millennium Scholarship. And then we started to move with the graduating class of 2016 at 36%. And then last year's class, you can see we had a nice jump. So when I talked to Nikki Hendy, lead counselor at the high school, we talked about what were the reasons why we had that jump, and we came up with three big reasons. There's a lot of other reasons, but we came up with three big ones for you tonight. First and foremost, the graduation class of 2017 was the first class. We changed, as a district, we changed the graduation requirements. For the record, Carson City School District follows the state of Nevada graduation requirements, except we've upped the rigor in two, we've upped the qualifications for a diploma in two areas. In Nevada, students are expected to take two science classes. In the Carson City School District, we expect them to take three and pass three. In the state of Nevada, the state of Nevada expects students to take three math courses and pass three math courses to receive a diploma. The Carson City School District requires students to pass four math classes. We've been working on remediation rates. We know that when students take math right up to the day that they graduate, they have a less of a chance for remediation when they leave us and transition to higher ed. So the 2017, class of 2017 was the first with those requirements, and if you look... So, the 2017, class of 2017 was the first with those requirements, and if you look in the handout with the Millennium Scholarship information, you'll see that matches exactly the requirements for the Millennium Scholarship. That's just an automatic for those students. The second thing is, is now, all students take the ACT. Maybe in the days that you were qualifying to go to school, folks took the SAT or the ACT on a weekend, you spent your time going up there, and it wasn't, not everybody did that, but all of our juniors take the ACT. So, if you also look on the handout under the GPA section, if a student qualifies, can qualify by taking the ACT, and if they score a 21 on the composite or higher but didn't quite meet the GPA requirement, it's waived. So, there's nothing more heartbreaking than a student who has met all the requirements, but they have a GPA of 3.24, and they needed the 3.25. But if they score high enough on the ACT, that part is waived. So, that has netted some extra students for us as well. But I think one of the really important things, that's a testament to Mr. Zona, Principal at Pioneer, and Mrs. Tasha Fuson, who's going to present later tonight, the work of their leadership and the staff, and the fact that the school itself, the leadership, the teachers, the counselors are encouraging the students to take higher-level courses, encouraging them to take advanced placement courses, taking honors courses, and of course, Jumpstart College courses, because that helps a student obtain a higher GPA. Plus, it brings additional rigor into their daily schedule. Now, if we look at the same data, now, if you look at the visual pieces, you know, so we've got numbers, we have numbers there, but we have that visual graph there. If you think about Pioneer, now, Pioneer graduates between 42 and 48 students a year, and the first two years, their Millennium Scholarship winners, there were three at that school. Then, in 2016, they had, oh my goodness, they had five. And then, last year, they had eight. So, they too had, they too are on that upward trajectory over at Pioneer High School. So, when I called Kerry Jordan, Counselor over at Pioneer, he's, you know, of course, the same thing. The students at Pioneer have the same graduation requirements as all Carson City School District students have. They also all have to take the ACT. And then, what Mr. Jordan said, or Mr. Kerry Jordan said is that, I'm going to use his terms, he said that over here, the students have a vibe for Jumpstart College. They may not all qualify, but they're interested, they're talking about it, and they like the idea of taking a course or two up at WNC. So, that helps them. So, in summary, this is, I'm making this a brief presentation tonight, in summary, for both high schools, the number of Millennium Scholarship recipients is, has been increasing, and I personally believe that this incentivizes our students to take advantage of the universities and colleges that we have to offer here in Nevada rather than just going out of state. And because I do a lot with workforce development, I also believe that, you know, when you think about what are those natural tended things that happen or actions that happen, if we have our students who earn the Millennium Scholarship, it incentivizes more kids and gives more students the opportunity to go to our Nevada schools, the result has to help the workforce for the state of Nevada. So, at this time, I'd entertain any questions?
So, can you, I just want to clarify, is that the number that are eligible versus how many actually utilize their scholarship, or is that how many utilize the scholarship?
That is the number that is eligible. As far as what, you know, once the students leave us...
You don't know how many are taking it?
We don't always know, and sometimes, they'll, they'll start and stop. You know, they'll go a semester, and then, they realize that they might need to not go to UNR but go to WNC, or they might go from WNC to UNR, or they work in between, there's all kinds of variables in that.
Do we know by chance from the Treasurer's Office or what the percentage is that utilize their Millennium Scholarships, just even statewide, do we know the number?
You know what, I, that would have been a good question for me to call, and I could call and get back to you.
I'd just be interested, because it probably is applicable the same to Carson or something.
I think off the top of my head, I heard it was around 60%.
Thank you, Stacy.
The other part of that, Lori, too, is you don't have to use it right away. I think it's, you have up to 10 years to use it, if I understand correctly. So, no, that's, I think that's still the case. My daughter's using it, and that's, we looked into that because we didn't use it the first two years. So, you could have a kid that graduated five years ago but hasn't used it yet and still may.
So, you do have some time, and it's about a $10,000 scholarship for a student.
Thank you. You, first of all, I want to commend you on your work on workforce development as well as your work as an educator. Actually, it's all intertwined, and I want to say, make a brief comment on the comments made by Mr. Swirzick at the beginning, I was really happy to hear you talk about the whole aspect from the Sheriff's Resource Officers all the way through, and you included the arts and said that that was a great part of it, you said, "That's really nice." I agree with you. As a matter of fact, I would one-up you and say, "I think it's crucial," because steam is where I want to go, not just stem. I think we all agree on that, that's a good place for us to talk. Given that, and given my background, I'm interested in hearing what perhaps the language requirement or lack of it is in the same vein as you talked about math and science, because, of course, the underpinning of our entire culture is language, and I am a great advocate, although I'm not real-versed in speaking Spanish, which is what I took, in seeing our children get opportunities in language. Is there a requirement for the millennial scholarship that keys on that?
There's no requirement for students to take foreign language in order to receive the millennial scholarship, but they must graduate from a Nevada high school, and two years of foreign language is very, you know, I'm going to have Mrs. Fuson come and talk about this. She can talk about all the angles, and some of this may show up later in her presentation as well, but foreign language is very valuable, and she can talk about the various colleges and their requirements as far as foreign language.
And I was, because I asked that because I was very interested in the fact that Carson City has a higher requirement in math and science than is the general requirement, so I'd like to see us go there if we could.
So, one of the challenges to require...
Tasha, could you identify yourself for the record?
Yes, Tasha Fuson, Principal Carson High School, for the record. I don't want to say challenge, it's really not a challenge, but for our students, for the Nevada Systems of Higher Education, our colleges do not require world languages for students' admission to UNR, UNLV, Western Nevada. Some states and state colleges do. For instance, students who apply to UC schools, typically, they require at least two, but they prefer three. Students who want to go to Oregon State Schools have to have world languages. So, what our counselors do when they're meeting with students in terms of their aspirations for post-high school planning is they try to match that for our students as well. I would say, and I don't have the exact stats on it, but we do have a large number of students who take world languages, because in order to get an honors diploma currently in Carson City, the student has to have two years of world language in the same language. So, that is a higher distinguished level of diploma, for instance, than the advanced diploma and also the standard diploma. So, currently, at Carson High, students have three options, your standard high school diploma, which as Mrs. Kima said, actually, our requirements are higher than the states in terms of math and science, but also in total credits. So, in the state of Nevada, students are only required to have 22 and 1/2 credits. Our students are required to have 24 and 1/2, with the extra credit being a math and science, the extra two credits. So, that's for a standard diploma. Then, for an advanced diploma, our students are required to have a GPA, I think it's a 3.25 GPA, basically meet the requirements of the Millennium Scholarship. So, if you earn an advanced diploma in Carson City, then you also meet the eligibility requirements for the Millennium Scholarship. Above that, our students have the opportunity to earn an honors diploma. It is a higher GPA, I believe it's a 3.5 GPA at that point in time. Students have to have eight credits in honors or advanced placement and have to have the two world languages. So, that scaffolds it up for students, if you will, based on what their post-high school plans are.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to say, Tasha, congratulations to you and your staff, because those numbers are phenomenal. And Trustee Crossman and I were both really kind of over here doing kind of silent applause for that 47%, because that just speaks to the work you're doing for our students, so great job.
Thank you, and since you said that, I want to just throw a little shout-out to my staff as well, because we did get a 93% graduation rate for the class of 2017. That is up from 86% over the last four years and is significantly higher than the state and national average, so thank you.
It was 86 on the, Adriana just sent us one of those ones from another, one of the national surveys, it was 86%. So, it's now 92?
Ninety-three. For Carson High School, it's 93%.
That's what I mean.
When you get the other ones, it's combined with Pioneer.
This was Carson High School, yeah. I mean, but it was, anyway, it's good, it's good news.
How has that message gotten out? Because, you know, when you hear the statistics, it's always, "Oh, Nevada ranks at the bottom of the list," which is very frustrating. I know it's Southern Nevada that drags us down, and it really frustrates me, because I know our schools here are better than even Reno. So, how do you get the word out?
Well, meetings like this, with the work of Mrs. Fuson and our prin, all our principals in the district, and their parent meetings and the communications that they have with their families and within the community, we have a Public Information Officer now that works through Mr. Stokes and puts out on Facebook and works with the Nevada Appeal and Carson Now and TV stations. We just had, I believe it was channel either two or four that was down this week with Carson Mill with their attendance incentive program as far as they were advertising. So, just constantly hitting the street as far as letting people know and talking it up everywhere we go, as far as every publication, every time we recruit Mr. Dolphin, wherever Mr. Fueling goes to with his CFO conferences, and wherever we go, we're constantly recruiting and talking about our community.
Does the information get to the Northern Nevada Development Authority?
We have an extensive CTE program, Core Technical Ed Program here in Carson City. Michelle Lewis is an administrator extraordinaire, and she's involved with all these state agencies. Plus, when we are meeting with our state board members and we're participating in our state meetings, we're at the table.
Hi there, Jose Delfin for the record, Associate Superintendent. You wouldn't know it, but Sue and I are twins. I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the board's joint efforts here. When I do go out and recruit, as Sue said, that it is such a great thing to say that both the city and the school district are in joint partnership in making things better for our kids. And when I say that to people who are not in, well, even in Nevada, they're shocked, because it doesn't happen very often. So, it really does make a difference that we are united in making really wonderful things happen for our kids. In fact, yesterday or the other day, I was talking to a potential teacher in my office and interviewing her, and she's a special ed teacher, by the way, so it was even better. So, I said, "We have a great district, and this is the best job you'll ever have." And I said, "You know, we're doing things better than making iPhones or Teslas or spacecraft." I said, "We are building great people in our district, and that's a charge we have as educators and community members here." So, I just want to echo that for everyone that, don't forget, our mission here is not just to build a great school district or a city, but to build great people for all of us. So, thank you.
Also, I just would like to add that while our numbers are up as far as enrollment in the district, and we know that there's building going on in our community, there's starting to see a different look in some of the numbers. You're going to hear from Mrs. Valerie Dockery about the Gate program. At one time in our district, before she was assigned the helm of that particular program, our families of Gate students would talk about liking to go to our school district, but they needed to go somewhere else to get the services they needed for their gifted and talented students. Now, we have surrounding districts coming to us. They come to us in Carson Online, they come to us for all the programs that we offer at Carson High School, they come to us because of they, that we have an option for an alternative setting for a student that might need something like that, and then, we have, of course, our student and family-friendly elementary schools and middle schools. So, what we're finding is, is that the people, the students that are coming to us, there's a, just, the parent, the feedback that we're getting is that there's, there is a little different twist to it, because somebody must be hearing about us. And as we develop our website, there'll be more and more information up there regarding about the academic successes of our district.
So, I wonder if by chance, maybe it takes off on everything we talked about today at the board level, but since we have this joint thought here, what about developing, I don't know, Carson City Kids with Character, whatever, on our billboard that's out front of the community center, and you have one in front of the high school, why don't we celebrate that success and make a little slide or something and produce it, so that everybody driving through our community can go, "Oh, my gosh, look what our school's just achieved." And so, I just wonder if that's, I think it would be great driving by to see the wows, instead of, I mean, I like it saying the game is going to be at this time, but I'm just, I'm just suggesting that maybe we celebrate the success of the student achievement on our bulletin boards. It's just a thought.
Good idea. We, of course, use the one in front of the community center when we're advertising kindergarten enrollment and pre-K and certain classes, but certainly, we can put some, some big news up there.
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry. I just want to do one clarifying point for all of you, is that sometimes, that number that you see published gets changed a lot, and you'll say, "Why does Principal Fuson say the graduation rate was 93.2%, but why is it in the newspaper or on this thing that it's 83% or 88%, and those numbers never seem to match?" That drives me crazy as well. What I will let you know is that when the reporting is done at the federal level, and often on our accountability reporting, it's usually a year behind, if not two years behind. So, we're looking at our data, and it says, "Okay, you know, you had an 86% grad rate two years ago, three years ago, it's never current." So, our graduation rate for the class of, and that's what you really have to pay attention to, what are they saying, is it the class of 2015, class of 2016, class of 2017? So, Carson High School's class of 2017, so this most recent class of graduates, that's the 93.2%. And then, when you look at national averages, it's usually a year behind, too. And then, you look at the state, the state just released their graduation rates, and then, when Clark County released theirs, they were releasing preliminary rates that were not official, because it doesn't become official until December. So, you're constantly seeing these moving numbers, so hopefully, that adds a little clarity to why you see that.
So, maybe we can put a billboard up next to the, on Medical Parkway, so that all the doctors that live in Reno can read it when they come into Carson City.
And I was just going to make a comment similar to Mrs. Fuson's about the graduation rate, and I know the Education Week report that came out this, last week and got a lot of press, that is using data from 2015. So, it's not reflective of changes that have occurred more recently, especially in the Carson City District. And then, Carson High School's rate is 93% for graduation for this last year, 2017. And when you look at the district-wide, that includes not only Pioneer High School, which services some of the kids that are struggling more, but also our adult education program is included in that district-wide rate. So, that's something to keep in mind also when you look at the graduation rates for the district as a whole, is that includes adult ed. Those are, those are students who've already basically left the system and are coming back to complete their diploma. So, just extra information for you.
Have a clarification for Lori, for that 60%. There's only nine institutes that it's eligible, so if they go out of state, they don't...
So, if they go out of state, they don't take it with them. So, that's why it's only 60.
Any public comment? Anybody want to voice their opinions? Sue, thank you. Tasha, we'll see you soon.
Mr. Chairman, I want you to go on, but I'm going to take a break and leave and come back.
Sorry. It's my job, I forget.
Let's do it again. Okay, we're starting again. Now, just... Okay, calm. Okay, item number seven. Presentation on specialized programs for students enrolled in the Carson City School District to include gifted and academically talented education. That's a GATE program for grades K through 8, Strings and Schools program, and advanced math offerings. And this is against Sue Kima and Valerie Dockery.
Kral, President Sworzik. Valerie Dockery, I'm the Director of Grants and Special Projects for the Carson City School District. I came into this position in 2013-14. I was principal at Borderwork Bray for six years prior to that. When I was principal at Borderwork Bray, I always... I was principal during the No Child Left Behind era. We did a really great job, a phenomenal job actually, with taking our students who were struggling and helping them achieve. And we went on, we received awards for those things. But always in the back of my mind was, "What about my gifted kids? What about my gifted kids?" I had had experience in a previous district working with a GATE program and I always felt like I wasn't really doing justice for those children. So, I come into this position and Mrs. Kima says, "Well, you know, I really want you to take a look at this GATE program." So, I need my slides up? Please?
That's the fastest I've seen it move.
AJ's not in the gifted program.
Yeah, you don't want me doing it. I was sitting right next to it.
So, while we're waiting for the slides, one of the things that I always like to keep in mind and I like to tell people when we're talking about gifted children is that, you know, sometimes people will say to me, "It's not fair that they get something different. It's not fair." I never hear that comment when I look at students who have special needs or are learning English. I've never hear that comment, but I do hear it. And I don't hear it much anymore in Carson City, but, you know, sometimes I will hear the "fair" comment. And what I like to say to people is, it's... Fair doesn't mean that every student gets the same thing. Fair means that every student gets what they need to be successful. And so, that is always really the caveat that we keep in mind as we move forward with any of the programs we do in the district and especially with our gifted program. So, as we go on, we had the catalyst that Mr. Sworzik talked about, Empower Carson City 2017. So, as I'm coming into my new position, we have a strategy within that strategic plan that really was what catapulted us forward in being able to make some changes and look at what needed to be done. And that original, as you can see, that original strategy, supporting and service... Support and services for gifted students will be expanded at student-zoned schools. Options will be added for gifted and talented students to attend specialized programs at designated sites for those who require full-time gifted placement. And really, without this, without this in... Without the support of the board, without this in the strategic plan, the support of senior leadership, I don't think we would be where we are right now. So, I really need to thank everyone for that because this was really what really got the ball rolling for us. So, then we fast forward to Empower Carson City 2022. Under curriculum that matters, we still have the same 2.2 empowering students by providing a variety of high-quality programs of study that will excite their interests, foster their talents, and better prepare them for careers. And underneath that, continue to provide specialized programming to support gifted and talented students as well as other groups, English language learners, students with special needs, et cetera. So, again, we're still looking at the needs of different groups of students within the Carson City School District. So, then we also have within statute, Nevada revised statutes and the administrative code, an actual definition of gifted and talented, meaning a person who possesses and demonstrates outstanding ability in one or more of the following areas: general intelligence, academic aptitude, creative thinking, productive thinking, leadership, visual performing arts. In the Carson City School District, we focus on academic talent primarily. We do not have a program that focuses on creative talents at this point in time. And we will... We are looking at that down the road, but pretty much across the state, most of the programs are focused on academic talent because that is the not easy thing, but a little bit easier to measure rather than talent. But it is something we are always trying to think of, can we bring that forward in the future? And then, a pupil who is gifted must have 150 minutes of differentiated instruction. Now, I will tell you each week, that is not enough. And this Carson City program goes above and beyond that because 115 minutes to me and to our teachers, our GATE teachers, is almost criminal. We're not gifted for 150 minutes a week. So, our vision... We have a vision statement for our program. We believe that the GATE program will create independent, self-aware, creative thinkers who persevere within a challenging and ever-changing world. And we had our teachers and our students help us develop this mission statement. And our mission is to identify students with exceptional cognitive and academic skills, to provide support, respectful environment, and promote authentic and challenging learning opportunities that encourage students to innovate, collaborate, critique, analyze, and problem-solve, to nurture the academic, social, and emotional needs of these students. And the social-emotional part is key. We work really hard on that part. We train our teachers on how to work with our students on this part because contrary to popular belief, gifted students are not perfect. And we encourage our students to become lifelong learners and achieving to their highest potential. And a lot of our students, this is like the first time that they're being... They're really challenged, like when they come into the program in the beginning in third grade and when they get into the middle school program in sixth grade. We have a lot of tears, we have a lot of concerns, maybe we didn't get our A that we've always had. So, that social-emotional piece is really important and that we're pushing students early on so when they get to college, they're ready to deal with those kinds of challenges. So, program implementation. As I said, 13-14 is when I came on board and we spent a year investigating what other districts did, reading research. We did focus groups with parents and students. We did surveys with our staff and getting input on our program and what they liked and what they wanted us to change. And I didn't... I don't have all of that with me tonight because I didn't want this presentation to get too long, but we are going back out again this year and doing the process over. 15-16... So, 14-15, we launched our elementary cluster program, and I'll get into that in a little bit. 15-16, we implemented a cluster program in our middle schools for our GATE kids. 16-17, we refined those programs and we piloted a Young Scholars program where we're starting to look at kids in second grade now and then looking... We don't identify them as gifted yet, but we try to cluster them and try to identify some of those abilities early on. And then for this year, we are... We have differentiated our middle school programs. We have a little bit different program at our two middle schools. We have our Young Scholars program going and we're expanding our summer programs and enrichment. So, we have high achievers versus gifted. And I'm not going to go through all of these. You have these in your handout. But there are some differences when you think about our students. You know, works hard versus performs with ease, commits time and effort, whereas some students may need less time. We talked earlier about, in the presentations, about differentiating for kids for what they actually need. Students who are gifted need things... Don't need things repeated 10 times. They might need only one repetition. They don't need homework with 10 of the same problems when they only need two. I've heard kids say to me, "It's not fair that I have to read three books because I read faster than somebody else that only has to read one. That's not fair." So, kids get it too. So, what that child needs is a book at their reading level that's meatier, that they can attend to. So, those are a lot of the things that we have worked on in our program. So, GATE identification, and this is the part that I think... One of the parts I'm most proud of in the district. We have an ongoing nomination process. When I came into this role, we only identified students in second grade and at the end of second grade, and if you weren't identified then, that was it. That was the number-one complaint from parents and that was a justified complaint. So, we take nominations at any time, but our big push is right now, from now and through March. So, we're identifying new students for next school year. Identification is grades 2 through 11, but technically, most of that is really in grades 2 through 7 or 2 through 8. We use multiple criteria, and this is the part that's really important. When a parent says to me, "I want my child tested for GATE," I like to say, "We're not testing students for GATE, we're nominating them." We look at multiple criteria. We look at their cognitive ability based on a cognitive assessment, how they think. We're looking at their academic achievement, how they've done on an S-Back or a MAP test. We look at... The teacher has an observational form that they fill out. And we also look at special circumstances because we know that students who live in poverty, are English learners, have a learning disability, are underrepresented in gifted populations. So, we have some extra points in our system related to that. And we... I want to say also that we were commended by the English Mastery Council for ensuring that our English learners have access to our program. And I'll show you those stats in a minute. So, we're really proud of the inclusion in our program. So, our GATE identification in 13-14, we had 693 students, 735 in 14-15, 15-60, 791, 16-17, 869. And this year, 845, so we've leveled out. It's about 10% of our population. Some people believe that's high. If you look at the national statistics, it's between 6 and 10. So, we don't feel that that's high because we do use multiple criteria and we want to have as many students included. We don't... We want to include, not exclude. That's our philosophy. 36% of our students attend Title I schools, high-poverty schools. 14% are English language learners. That closely mirrors our district percentage for English learners. 10% are students who are twice exceptional, have an individual education plan, and 2% are McKinney-Vento, students who are homeless or living in transitional housing. And this is really important too because many of those students have gaps in their academic skills and they may score very low on an S-Back or a MAP test, but when we give them a cognitive test, we see this high ability. So, we have about 2% of those kids in our groups. In elementary school, we cluster those students in grades 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade. The teachers in the cluster classroom have a GATE endorsement on their license. So, if you go to Mark Twain Elementary School, there's a 3rd grade teacher who has all the GATE kids in her classroom. She has a GATE endorsement. The same thing in 4th grade, the same thing in 5th grade, the same thing at every single elementary school in our district. The district curriculum is compacted, differentiated, and accelerated to meet those students' needs. Additional supplies and materials are provided and the teachers receive monthly support. We grew our own teachers. We offer the GATE endorsement courses here within the district. That's why we've been able to provide all of these endorsed teachers. And now, the state is requiring that any teacher who works with a gifted student must have that endorsement, and we sit really well with that. This past year, we had at least four openings where teachers who left GATE positions and we were able to fill them easily with other teachers with the endorsement. So, we feel really good about that. And we have administrators who have been trained and they walk with our GATE implementation specialists and our GATE consultant to see, "What should that look like in this classroom versus another classroom?" So, in our middle school, we have two different programs going on. We have the same cluster model happening at Eagle Valley Middle School. So, students are clustered together, but they may be in a class with other students who are not gifted. And it's by subject. So, in 6th grade, there'll be an ELA cluster, a social studies cluster, and a science cluster within a regular classroom with a GATE-endorsed teacher. Same thing at 7th grade and the same thing at 8th grade. Math is not technically GATE. I will show you that in a minute in middle school, but we have lots of advanced courses that they'll be speaking to later for all of our students to take part in. So, in Carson, at Eagle Valley, you have the same cluster model, 6th, 7th, and 8th grade with GATE-endorsed teachers, so at that school in each subject. At Carson Middle School, we have what we call our immersion program. So, all the students in a particular course and section are identified as gifted. And so, in 6th grade, again, you'll have ELA sections with a GATE teacher. You'll have social studies sections. You'll have science sections with a GATE teacher. The same in 7th grade, the same in 8th grade. We support enrichment and we also provide some support during advisory with that social-emotional need. So, that's where we have our big, real immersion program going. Students who are at Eagle Valley, if they and their parents would like them to be in the immersion program, they can go to Carson Middle and we provide busing for that as well. So, there is a choice there and we're able to do that at Carson Middle because of the size of the school and the ability to offer those different periods. So, we do offer that option. I think we have about 20 students who are zoned Eagle Valley coming over to Carson Middle for the immersion program. And then, our middle school math options, again, we offer advanced courses to all students. They have to meet district criteria to get into those courses. And this is a really big model that you can see, but what I'm really excited about is in middle school, students have an opportunity to take algebra and geometry before they even get into high school. And I know they're going to talk about that, but I think that's been one of the biggest achievements in working together with all our curriculum people and Mrs. Kima and all of our schools to be able to offer this. And in high school, we don't have a formal program up there, but this is where our students go into AP and honors. And the state has said that unless you have a GATE teacher working with students, you cannot get any state money for those kids. Well, technically, in high school, they need something different. They don't need a, quote, "GATE teacher." They need AP and honors teachers. They need help getting into college, help with scholarships. So, we are trying to provide some of that support as well and help them with their course selection. We have a counselor, Susan Gruner, who is the GATE counselor. She's GATE-endorsed and she helps those students, making sure they stay on track. The high school has added so many more sections of honors and advanced courses to accommodate all students, not just GATE students. That's been wonderful. The dual college credit option is great for our kids, the CTE options, and internships and teacher training. So, it's... We're really... Our kids have a natural fit now going from that support in GATE in middle school right into the high school where they can flourish. So, funding. We never used to have any funding for GATES at all. The district stepped up and provided us the first couple of years about $150,000 just to get us going. And they still... I need to tell you that we could not do this program without district funding. All of our teachers are general ed teachers, so they're allowed to teach GATE, you know, and they're funded by the general fund. So, the little bit of money we get, you can see it here, $305,000, $319,000, $301,000. That goes for the coursework that we do with the teachers. We have a GATE implementation specialist that helps me out. We have a GATE consultant. We provide support, materials. That's where that little bit of money goes. We're not paying for teacher salaries out of that. The district is supporting that. So, that is a really wonderful piece of our program. And again, and that's just up here, you know, what we use the money for. The busing for the kids coming over from Eagle Valley, those kinds of things come out of that pot. So, next steps, we're going to continue to support our teachers. We're going to continue to expand our Young Scholars program. We'd like to get it down to 1st grade. Maybe not... We're thinking maybe not kindergarten from the feedback we're getting, but maybe 1st grade. Competitions, we'd like to do more to support our kids getting out there and competing in things like Quiz Bowl and... So next steps, we're going to continue to support our teachers. We're going to continue to expand our Young Scholars Program. We'd like to get it down to first grade. Maybe not, we're thinking maybe not kindergarten from the feedback we're getting, but maybe first grade. Competitions, we'd like to do more to support our kids getting out there and competing in things like Quiz Bowl and Science Olympiad and all of those kinds of things. We've supported the Lego team this year that went all the way to England. Enrichment programs before and after school, summer opportunities, and we're going to, this year, we're repeating our surveys and focus groups with kids and parents and staff to see what kind of impact we've had in the last four years. So just in closing, I really want to thank our team, our superintendent, associate, our board, everyone. We would not be here where we are today without you guys. Thank you. Questions?
So you said on Eagle Valley that it's not an immersion like middle, so about 20 students are taking the bus. Why isn't Eagle Valley an immersion? Is it classroom size, number of students?
It's some of those things. It's scheduling, classroom size, number of teachers. We have about, what, two-thirds of our students at Carson Middle and about a third at Eagle Valley. So being able to, we started out with that immersion program, and we had problems with the schedule and being able to do that. So we went to this model instead. It seems to be working well, because it's the same model we do in elementary school. So it seems to be working well. But we finally had to do that after about a year, maybe two, to make it work better for the school, so they could offer all the sections and courses they needed to offer.
Just a comment. I'm particularly proud of the identification, that we are identifying these kids, and that we're identifying English language learners and those in poverty, because we know that giftedness occurs across every socioeconomic class, across every race and ethnicity. And so the fact that we are identifying kids that maybe would have fallen through the cracks before is so important, because a lot of times, people think that gifted kids are going to be just fine, but studies have shown, and results have shown, that they are an at-risk student population. They're at risk for some of the social-emotional, some of the, they're easily frustrated. They tend to have perfectionism issues, where sometimes they can't decide which of their great ideas to work with. And they, I just, I'm really pleased that that is occurring in our district and that we are catching those kids and giving them the services. It's not that they just are smarter, it's that they learn differently, and our whole learner-centered model applies to this as well, to help these kids learn what they need to learn. And I'm also really, really pleased with the GATE endorsements that our teachers have. When my son first started the GATE program in third grade, he's now a freshman, there wasn't a teacher in the district with a GATE certification. And I know in talking to all of the teachers who have done the GATE training, they said it not only helps them with their GATE students, but with every student. It just has improved their teaching all the way around. So I'm really proud of these changes in our district.
And I want to say that we're kind of bucking the trend a little bit statewide with our identification. Because there's money involved now with funding for GATE, there's some concerns about over-identification at the state level. But we have a GATE Advisory Council that meets monthly, and we brought this to them, and we have many stakeholders, parents on their community, administrators, teachers, counselors, and they overwhelmingly want us to continue on with our process and continue offering the program that we offer. I will tell you that we are losing many less students. When I was a principal, I had many students at Boarderwick that left to go to Washoe for their GATE program. I now have many kids coming back from our private schools in the community, from other schools, coming in from Washoe to take advantage of the program.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I'll be frank, because that's the only way I know how to be. I've spent three-quarters of a century on this planet, and this is probably the first report I have ever heard at any school gathering, school board, school situation, where somebody spoke up this strongly for the gifted people in the school system. I've even been a little bit privately of a curmudgeon regarding our public school systems, because this has been the group historically that this country has left behind in many ways that have nothing to do with economics. It's one of the reasons that I said earlier, I think it would be really good if we could beef up our linguistic skills, both in our own language and in the world's languages. There is no better way to get to critical thinking than to go through what we're doing now called communications. And so I'm very heartened by your report. I encourage you, and as far as those who worry about it being fair, they're taxpayers, they have the right to have that worry, but this is as fair as we can get to everybody as it can get. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Valerie, thank you so much for your presentation, but the work that you put in to make this happen, make it a reality. Before you go, who's sitting next to you? It's not Susan Kima?
How rude. That's a great segue, Mr. Sorezak, or President Sorezak, because this is Brian Fox, and he's going to talk to you about the Strings in Schools program. So he's been waiting patiently for me to finish. Thank you.
Following excellent presentation on GATE in our schools here in Carson City. Yes, my name is Brian Fox. I'm orchestra teacher, Carson City School District, and I teach at Carson High, Carson Middle School, and Eagle Valley Middle School every day. And I'm here to tell you a little bit about why we have an orchestra program, the origins of that, and past, present, future. I've prepared a few remarks here. I'm pleased to have been invited by Mrs. Kima to speak to you, and I'm currently in my second year here in the district, teaching orchestra. So the program that's mentioned on the agenda is Strings in the Schools, and this is a program of the Carson City Symphony Association. Carson City Symphony's been a part of our community here since 1983, when it was initiated by David Bugley and his wife, Ellie Bugley. And starting in 2005, their education director, Sue Jesch, began an after-school program for, an outreach program for strings players, because certainly, we've had band and choir in our schools for many, many years, decades. And it was one of Mrs. Jesch's goals from the very beginning of Strings in the Schools, to have strings become part of the curriculum in Carson City. So the program began as after-school lessons and after-school ensembles, and it's had the support of both Superintendent Stokes and former Superintendent Piersinski. And since its inception, they've been staunch supporters, and we thank them very much for that. That was 2005. The program got going. In 2010, the partnership became a little bit more formal between the school district and the Carson City Symphony. Strings classes started being taught at both of our middle schools. And I was speaking with Sue today over email, and she said to make sure that I mention our middle school music educators, who were such a great help also in getting this started, Brianna Valley, John Brill, and Nick Jox. Mrs. Jesch was also a crucial part of the move into the school. She volunteered, she spent extensive amounts of time in the strings classroom every day, truly on her part, a monumental investment of time and energy. The next year, we began an orchestra class at the high school, and Sue was there as well, volunteering time. And she mentioned that the support of former band director Jared Sorum, and current band director Bill Zabelski was invaluable to her, as they were the teachers who sometimes even sold their prep time to include strings and really get this program going. And soon after that, soon after, in the following years, the Strings in the Schools added two more instructors who worked in different specialized areas of strings, on cello, violin, and skipping ahead, I think I've prepared something like five to eight minutes of remarks. But skipping ahead to the next year that I have listed here as a key year, in 2016, the district hired its first orchestra teacher, which is me. And I'm happy to be here before you today. I feel blessed and honored to hold this position and serve in this role. I happen to be on the Carson City Symphony Association's board, and I also serve as concert master in the orchestra. And so that's kind of how this whole program got started. I'm very pleased to relate all of this to you. Some more recent growth in both the Strings in the Schools, and now that we do have an orchestra director, the association has decided to call their after-school program Symphony Youth Strings, because now we really do have strings in the schools. And so in 20, a few items of growth that are notable, in 2017, the district purchased 35 string instruments for the program, looking ahead to the growth that we're certainly hoping to have, and we're already seeing signs of. Carson High School added a second orchestra class, my chamber orchestra, which is really for my very top students, and we have some real talented students here in Carson City because of Strings in the Schools, and because of the fact that it begins at the second-grade level. And I have students who began in elementary school who are now in my chamber orchestra at the high school. It's just really a program that has had a lot of continuity. Band and choir teachers talk about their feeders. My feeder is the Carson City Symphony's Symphony Youth Strings program. So we have a chamber orchestra now at Carson High. Program enrollment, last year, in my first year as orchestra director, we had 100 students, just about right at 100. This year, it's 115. I was able to collaborate on the middle school level. I was able to collaborate with my colleague in Elko, in the Elko schools. He's the orchestra director there. We organized the first-ever middle school honor orchestra for students of Carson City and Elko. So they got together. We met in Reno, had a few days of rehearsal. On December 2nd was our honor orchestra concert, and it really set a great precedent that I think is going to continue. As far as, you know, future plans for this great inclusion of strings in the music curriculum, I'd like to build on what I have, but I'd like to see, at the high school level, a third orchestra class eventually. We don't have the numbers for that yet. I'd like to teach a guitar class. Mariachi is definitely in my sights. I'd love to teach that as well. And at the middle school level, I would certainly propose that we hire, within, you know, five to eight years, a middle school string specialist to complement what I would hope to be doing at the high school. Mrs. Kima mentioned that, she said, "Speak about what is most satisfying to you as an orchestra teacher." And for me, that is seeing and hearing students achieve success. And we were talking, Mr. Sorezak was talking at the beginning of the meeting about all students achieving success, and that's certainly one of our goals. And in one sense, that includes our beginners. No, I teach beginners, and hearing them perform their very first notes, and in their, on their very first instrument, all the way up to some of my most advanced high school students who are performing difficult concerto, taken from the professional repertoire. Seeing that range of accomplishment is truly fantastic, and it's truly something I appreciate having inherited from Mrs. Sue Jesch and the program that she started. Some of the opportunities for success that we currently provide, I've mentioned a few, but we do four school-year concerts at the community center. We've got two more, March 6th and May 22nd. The middle school honor orchestra that I mentioned, solo and ensemble festival, which includes all of the northern zones, including Washoe County, is a festival that is for anyone who wants to perform a solo or be in a small ensemble. They can get professional adjudication, and comments, and scoring. We have similar festival opportunities at the orchestral level, including the spring trip. I'll be taking, you know, I take my model after the band and choir directors who take their top students on a spring trip. We're doing that again this year. Students have an opportunity to participate in Pitt Orchestra, as well as Nevada All-State Orchestra. Last year, we had three members make, of my orchestra make all-state. We have three auditioning this year. And I just wanted to conclude with the comment that strings had been the missing puzzle piece in music education here in the Carson City schools for some time, and that piece has now been filled in, and our community benefits from an even richer cultural engagement and a deeper involvement for our children in the arts. So thank you for allowing me to present those remarks to you today.
Impressive presentation. Let me just, before, turn it over to the rest. Tell me a little bit about you. Where are you from? Are you?
Yeah. Well, I was born in Southern California, but I grew up here in Reno, attended Reno High, graduated from there, was a participant in the all-state orchestra for four years. I've been a professional musician since high school. And actually, my academic path took me through a bachelor degree, as well as masters and doctoral degrees in Spanish, of all things. And, you know, the job market in the humanities these days in higher education is quite a challenging market to be entering into, and I certainly had some, plenty of experience in that realm. And how I ended up in music, you know, it was always with me as I pursued my studies in Spanish literature. You know, I maintained my skills, and I participated in orchestras in Riverside, California, and in Los Angeles, as well as even Montevideo, Uruguay. I was there for nine months doing research and participated in a chamber orchestra there. But I ended up here, strangely enough, the president of the Carson City Symphony Association, I had a contact with her and with the association, and she said, "Hey, Brian, you know, if you could promote this position, we're looking for really qualified musicians to teach in the Carson City Schools orchestra." And I said, "Sure," and I spread the word to my Reno music colleagues. And about a week later, I kind of said to myself, you know, "Hey, this job looks actually really appealing." And I applied myself. I applied as well, and was so honored to receive the job. And, you know, reflecting, it's funny, because when I was because when I was a young boy, the first real job that I ever wanted to have was an orchestra conductor. I apparently, I forgot about that for a couple decades growing up. But, but yeah, and so now I get to do that. And it's such a, a real pleasure. So that's, that's a little bit about me.
Turn this open to the board members, respect the board's questions. And John, you probably have a question.
No, but I do have an opportunity to beat my dead horse and say, you seem to be in all languages.
Yes.
Music is a language, right? Math is a language and languages, linguistics. And I was very impressed when you said concerti rather than concerto.
Yeah, which includes, of course, the printed language of music is Italian, right? And, and you know, when I am teaching pieces to our students, they learn, they learn some Italian. They learn some German. We were talking about, which one? Oh, di Zauberflöte, the other day in my concert orchestra class at Carson High School. Right, German, the magic flute by Mozart. And so they really do, it's, they get exposed to all of these different languages and how they help us communicate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions, comments? Brian, thank you very much for just choosing Carson City and what you're doing for our students.
Thanks, Amy. And that's, everybody benefits now. And the community benefits for you being here, so.
Absolutely. It's a pleasure to be here and to be in Carson City.
Can you be a gate teacher and then you fill in the arts piece that's missing in the gate?
I'd like to.
Oh, I'm on it, right? See? That kind of.
Yeah, when my contract permits, absolutely.
When you are next talking to SuJesh, would you please tell her, from all of us here in this room, thank you for doing what you're getting strings in schools started, and thanks for what she's done for our community. Just pass it on. I think I speak for all of us here.
Yeah, I'll convey that sincere, that sincere emotion, yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, within this agenda, item seven, we have the advanced math offerings. Has that been discussed or will someone discuss that as part of this?
We should have the slide that was super busy.
We had that in that slide that was in gate. But also, I believe Mrs. Fusam would touch on that when she's giving her presentation about what we offer with math.
Okay, then we'll go on to the informational update on ACT and advanced placement, the AP test scores in Carson City School District. Natasha, you're on.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Tasha Fusam, principal of Carson High School. I get the pleasure to kind of wrap up all of our presentations from this evening, talking to you about AP Jump Start and the ACT test, which is a college readiness test, all what we consider indicators of college readiness in, not just in Carson City, but also in our nation. I'm not going to go too far into this because we've talked about this specific piece. But one of the foundational things that really has changed our school is Carson City School District's change in graduation requirements back in 2012 to require students to have four math and three science. That's been instrumental in increasing the number of advanced placement and dual-credit courses that our students are taking. Because in addition to the fact that we require that additional course, we also changed our course sequences at the high school. We got rid of Algebra 1A, Algebra 1B, so two years of algebra before they went into geometry and then Algebra 2. And now all of our students, at the very least, take algebra in ninth grade. And as Valerie Dockery had stated, now our students have the opportunity to take that in seventh and eighth grade as well, take algebra and geometry. So many of our students, or a handful of our students, hit the high school taking geometry honors and/or, some of them, Algebra 2 honors. So that has helped us grow our advanced placement dual-credit program and then in science as well. So the most recent change there is we required at one point in time all of our ninth graders to take physical science and then biology in 10th grade, chemistry in 11th grade. And what that caused is it hindered our students' ability to take any of the advanced placement level courses in science because we kind of bogged up their schedules with physical science. The other thing that we changed significantly was having our students in the middle school take challenge tests to get into honors-level courses at the high school. We kind of threw those out the window and said, no. Our philosophy is that we want our students to be challenged to take the highest level of course of rigor that they can feasibly handle versus prove it to me on a, on a test that you can handle this class. So that has changed our culture significantly at the high school, specifically when it comes to advanced placement and again, dual-credit offerings, which we'll talk about briefly in the near future. So back in 2015, 2016, Carson High School actually, we had a pretty strong advanced placement program, but we offered only 11 courses. At that time, I won't read through all of these, but they were the pretty basic ones in math, English, and science. Specifically in math, since I was asked to address that, we offered calculus. So students, in order to get to calculus before they graduate from high school, actually have to take algebra in eighth grade or have to take two years of math at the same time to get to that level. So that then has actually opened up for our students to be able to take Calculus AB or Calc BC, which Calc BC is two semesters of college calculus in one year versus AB, which is basically one semester of calculus, college calculus in high school. And then we also added AP Stats, which we'll talk about briefly on the next slide. But so these were the courses we offered in 2015, 2016. And we've been building since then. So last year, in the 2016-17 school year, we added AP Environmental Science. So to begin with, we had AP Biology, AP Chemistry, AP Physics. But we wanted another opportunity or another course option for our students who might not be in your traditional lab science, having an interest in those traditional lab sciences like biology, chemistry, and physics. So we introduced AP Environmental Science. And our first shareout with that, we had two, two sections of that. This school year, we added four additional advanced placement courses. So we added AP Art History, AP Computer Science Principles, AP Music Theory, and AP Statistics. So that's that additional math course. So what that, the math course is allowed is where a student who's taking geometry in the eighth grade, they come to us in ninth grade, they take Algebra 2. In 10th grade, they take trig, pre-calculus honors. And their junior year, they can choose to take either AP Stats and/or AP Calculus and then take the other course the following year. So they do have four levels of math, even if they're taking geometry in eighth grade. For the 2018-19 school year, so next school year, we applied to be able to offer the AP diploma for our students. And our application was accepted by the college board. What that means is our students are required to take, if you want to get, earn an AP diploma, you have to take an AP Seminar class. So we are adding that course next year. And then the following year or their senior year, they have to take an AP Research Methods course, pass both of those courses as well as four other AP courses. And then they can earn an AP diploma. AP diploma is very similar to an IB diploma. If you have heard of that program, for instance, Worcester High School in Reno offers the International Baccalaureate Program. So the AP diploma program is the college board's version of that. So we will be offering that to our students. In addition, next year, we are adding the second year of computer science. So it's AP Computer Science A. That will actually be a CTE pathway within the next two years. So we actually have to have three, three years of computer science for students. And it actually starts with like a pre-computer science class before they jump into the computer science principles. And then last but not least, we will be offering AP Human Geography. So one of the things that we've looked at is most of our AP classes that are available to students, students will take in their junior and senior year. And we wanted to have some offerings for students to actually dabble in with in their, or their sophomore year. So AP Art History, AP Music Theory, and AP Human Geography are courses that are really targeted at 10th graders, allowing them to take those early college courses as early as 10th grade. So that being said, the super exciting thing about that is this chart, which shows you the growth of the number of students and the number of tests that we have, that we administer at the high school. So back in 2014, on this, it shows you the green line is the number of AP students. So we had 213 students. And the blue line is the number of AP tests. So we had 369 tests that were administered that year. Obviously, some students take more than one AP course at a time. Over the course of the last five years, we've raised that to 299 students this year, who will be taking approximately 570 AP tests. So we've almost doubled the number. Even more exciting than that is this next slide, which shows you how our students are doing. Because typically, when you increase that number of students at such a high level, accessing those advanced placement courses, you see test scores go down. Not in our case. So again, we're super excited. Because if you look at this slide, it shows you Carson High School is in the navy blue. Nevada and the global is in gold. So you can see in 2013, even back in 2013, we significantly outperformed the state and the global. But if you continue on through, having twice the number of students taking advanced placement and twice the number of tests, we still significantly outperform the state and global levels. In addition to that, if you notice both with the state and global, their test scores are pretty stagnant in terms of how many students earn those threes or above. And we're continuing to grow those number of students as well. So doubling the number of students taking it and still increasing the number of students getting threes on those tests. So we're very proud of our kids on that one. This next slide actually just shows you the raw data, so I won't go into that. But if you were curious about the actual numbers of students that are taking those courses and the scores that they're getting. And then we, our school district added our Jump Start program. This is our fourth year of Jump Start. So that's when students actually go in and take courses at WNC while they're enrolled at Carson High School. This slide shows you that our first year of the program, we started with 23 students. The second year, we had 67 students. So we had a significant growth there. And then last year, and I'll talk about this year in a minute, but last year, we had 89 students. So we've had steady growth in that dual-credit program as well. Now, this is so significant, but you've got to think about, we have this number of students taking college courses at WNC in addition to increasing the number of students taking advanced placement. So it, one did not replace the other. That was another thing we thought we might see. My teachers were very concerned. They said, we're going to do this dual-credit program with WNC. It's going to kill our advanced placement program. It did not. Okay? So both programs have been able to grow substantially. The bottom chart shows you the pass rates of the students taking those courses. So WNC loves Carson High School because our kids make them look good. They have a much higher pass rate than WNC's traditional students who come in and take courses at the college. So again, I won't get into the nuts and bolts of that. But just know that we have a very high pass rate. Our students have a super-high pass rate and actually are passing their college courses at the same level, if not higher than they're passing their high school courses, believe it or not. So that's exciting. And to sum this part, oh, nope, before I get to the sum-up part. The difference between last school year and this school year, again, is we continue to grow. So we added last year, for the first time, juniors to our Jump Start program. So students can apply for the program, get into it through junior year, and earn an associate's degree before they graduate from high school. We have 18 seniors on track this year to earn their associate's degree the week before they graduate from high school. So that's super exciting news. We have this year as well, another 22 juniors who applied for that. So next year, we should have 22 students who earn their associate's degree. We've continued to also increase the Track A. So that's our academic track students. So first-year seniors who are jumping into that program. And then we have started to build a Track C. C stands for CTE with Western Nevada. That includes a program in AIT, which is manufacturing, auto, CNA, so Certified Nursing Assistant, that's new, and flubotomy. So we have students that are taking those programs as well. So we're close to just under 100 students this year that are taking those courses at Western Nevada. So again, the fun sum-up part to me is this one, which shows you back in 2014, we had 369 college courses being taken. Okay? And then that has grown, as you can see by that chart, to 2018, we have 1,504 college courses that our students are taking this year before graduating from high school. So it's pretty impressive in terms of what our kids are being able to do and accomplish. And again, we're extremely proud of them. As shown by that slide. Now I get to talk to you about ACT. This is not our proudest, point, proudest achievement. But we're going to work on that, right? So some things that you have to focus on, and that's okay. And this is, this is our focus. So all of our students now, as part of their graduation requirements, have to participate in and take the ACT. They take it in their junior year. Part of my intention of sharing this information with you this, this evening is because I think there's a lot of things that people misunderstand about the ACT and about the scores, again, that get printed in the newspaper or shared. So I want to hopefully clear up some of that so that our community understands and our parents understand how their students are actually doing on this assessment. So come February 27th, we'll be administering that test again. ACT sends benchmarks for students to, on this, it shows you that a student who gets an 18, for instance, in English, has a 50% chance of obtaining a B or higher in their college course or a 75% chance of obtaining a C or higher. So ACT looks at their longitudinal data and says, where are students scoring and how are they achieving? Algebra or mathematics, it's a 22. Reading, a 22. And in science, a 23. Those course scores, by the way, are taken from seniors. Okay? And I want to point that out because when you look at our data, or even for the state of Nevada, they're showing you juniors' test scores. So these benchmarks are set for seniors. Okay? Why does it matter for our kids? Well, in Carson City, many of our students choose to go to Western Nevada, right? And it's hard for us to sometimes convince our students that in support for them to take this test and do well because Western Nevada doesn't require students to submit ACT scores. So kids sometimes don't translate that as, oh, no, this is an important test. But it still is important for them for many different reasons. And that is because, as Sue Kima discussed, it is a Millennium Scholarship qualifier qualification. So again, a student with a 21 can waive that GPA requirement. It does affect their college course placement. I'm going to show you a slide on that in just a moment. But also other scholarship qualifications. So for instance, Nevada Assistant Higher Ed, so WNC, and, or actually, this is specifically UNR, UNLV. But the course placement, they can either choose to take an Accuplacer going into college, or if their ACT scores, again, typically, it's their senior-level ACT scores if our students take it their senior year. But that will indicate which class they go into. So this slide shows you, for instance, how important it is for a student to get at least a 21 on their English test to not take a remedial-level course. So the English 100J for the kids who are 18 to 20, that's not remedial level, but students are basically paying to take, I think it's a five-credit course, to fulfill a three-credit requirement. So it's not considered remedial, but you're still losing money if you're having to pay for five credits instead of three to fulfill that requirement. Okay? So, and then anything below the 18, in essence, you're taking that course and you're not receiving college credit for that course. And that is not covered by grants typically. It's not covered by usually scholarships, et cetera. So that's an important piece. And then the next to it, I put the equivalent for math. So really, the target for math is a 22. So that gets them a math 120 or math 126 or higher, which again, is what they consider their, their basic-level introductory college course. So for instance, our Jump Start kiddos, they get to take 126 and 127 at school. So we do offer math 095 and 096 and English 095 and 098 on our campus. And Western Nevada takes those scores. So it's seniors taking those classes. And if they score a C or better in those courses, they get to jump into the regular-level course at the college. So we are working with them on that. But that's why it's important for that. This, this shows the University of Nevada Reno's scholarship matrices and the amount of money that students get based on their ACT score. And the difference, the big difference between, for instance, a 30 and a 31. Student with a 30 will get a one-time freshman-year $2,500 scholarship. If they get one point higher, get that 31, they get an $8,000 per year for four years. So $32,000 worth of funding based on a one-point difference. So it's important for parents and students to understand this. And it is not abnormal for students to make a four-to-five-point growth if they, you know, having that extra year. know, having that extra year, and if they're putting intentional studying and prepping for that test. It's not unheard of for students to have that high of a jump. So it's important, again, for families to understand that and students themselves to understand that translates into money for them. Okay. So to get to the picture of ACT scores for Carson City School District, this includes Pioneer High School as well as Carson High School. So it's not CHS alone. This is our district's scores in 2015 and 2016. So if you look to the left, it shows that, I don't know if you can, can you read that? The one to the left is Carson City School District. The one in the middle is National, and the one on the right is State. So we are always at minimally and slightly above the state. But we are not at the national level. But I also want to point out that that national-level score is for seniors. So when they put this information out in the newspaper, they often are comparing our juniors to seniors at the national level. I also want to point out that we're a census state, which means we test 100% of our kids. The only students that don't take the ACT in the state of Nevada are students who have cognitive impairments and aren't served in like CLS-type classes. Otherwise, you take it nationally. That is representing about 64% of students. 64% of students a year after our kids are tested. Okay? So again, please keep that in mind. So again, still not where we want to be. On this one, I did do a little bit more homework for all of you. I want to share with you that there's, again, 17 states that census test. And those are at the bottom. I listed them. And then I actually came up with their combined average score and added that to here. Because that is really a better goal for our district to try to aim at, right? Because now you're getting more to apples to apples. You're talking about juniors in all 17 census states, right? And where they are in terms of their average. So that, in this slide, you're looking at Carson, which is the blue on the left. And then the orange right next to it is the census state. So you can see, for instance, in composite, we're at 17.6. And the average for those 17 census states is 19.3. So we have, we need to grow. But that's a much more appropriate target than the 21, which again, is 63% of kids nationally in their senior year. Right? And then for English, again, we're at 16.2. And really, our goal should be 18.5. Math, 17.9 versus 19.1. Reading, 17.8 versus 19.7. And science, which is one of our stronger areas, 18.1 versus 19.6. So we're going to continue to work on pushing our kids in that direction. And there's ways, we're going to do that. So what are we doing now? I wanted to let you all know. Right now, our English department, and Pioneer is doing this as well. I've spoken to Principal Zona. What our teachers in junior-level English classes are doing is they are working with our students to get them signed up for Open Ed. Open Ed was purchased by ACT. And it is a resource that pulls together all different academic free resources, like Khan Academy, and different tutoring services into one site. So our teachers are having our students create Open Ed accounts in the classroom. And they can take practice tests for ACT. And the nice thing is it drills it down for the students. I do a practice question. If I don't have it right, it takes me to Khan Academy. So it shows me how to redo this problem. I get to retry the problem, and I get to track my practice. So it's going to prep the students and give them the opportunity to do that. Now, we can't teach an entire class on that. But within junior English classes, they're going to take the time to get the kids set up, to get them going on it, so that they then can hopefully continue on that path on their own. Other departments, for instance, within our social studies classes, one thing they have done is they have started practicing ACT-style reading passages. So when ACT reports on four different scores, writing is really what they equate to a student's potential success in English. Reading, they actually point to the potential success in the social studies areas. And then science, of course, science and math is math. So social studies has been focusing on that to help our students with that reading section. Math, what we found out in a very cursory look at the standards that ACT is based on, and I'll talk about that in a second, but there are some things. ACT has its own set of standards. They are aligned, the Common Core or Nevada Academic Content Standards, but they're not exactly the same. So there are things that ACT tests on that we don't teach our kids. For instance, matrices. So our implementation specialist, Sarah Lobzinger, just looking through and went, "Wow, we don't teach kids matrices, and they are tested on that in the ACT." So what she has done is she has looked through that, and she has created opening activities for students to do in their junior-level math classes that are going to prep them on those things that they're not normally taught within the curriculum. And then science is doing the same thing within their after-school program. So again, we're working on that. And then the other thing that we're going to do is we're going to be offering an after-school boot camp for our kids. So kids can, again, come in after school, work through that Open Ed material, and hopefully improve their scores there. And then one to two weeks before the test, our counselors go in and talk to the kids and try to put that really hammer home, "Hey kiddo, this means money for you, really, and it also means not taking classes that you don't need when you go to college." We are going to really jazz up the college-going environment for our kids. We're doing a college week prior to that administration, putting banners up everywhere, having staff wear college T-shirts, trying to really, you know, just like we would any other spirit week, really get the kids just queued up to want to take this test and do their best. And then also trying to get the information out to our community and to our families. So again, another reason for having this conversation tonight. Because I think the more we all know about it, the more our families know about it, the more we can encourage our kids, "This is a serious test, and we want you to do your best for that." So we'll be doing that. And then in the long run, there's some things that we need to do at the district level to really help our kids. And that is aligning our core subject area courses to the college and career readiness standards. So making sure that we're not just doing opening activities on those things that we're not teaching, but integrating those into our curriculum as well. And then also giving our kids an opportunity to take similar tests to what ACT is. Our kids came out of those tests and went, "The questions are asked in a really weird way." You know, so they're having a hard time just interpreting what they're being asked to do, because they're not familiar with that. So doing that kind of test prep. And then the last thing that we really want to do is investigate given the PACT to our students. We're hoping to do that in September and October to get them used to that test format. Because the other thing, our learner-study model is phenomenal. It's a great thing for getting kids those skills. But what we don't teach kids is how to take a 35-question math test in 40 minutes and how to prep yourself for that. Our kids are used to having as much time as they need to work through those problems. So the kids came out, even our super smarties, and went, "Uh..." You know, it's like, you've got to read that question. And if you don't know the answer, and you don't know how to approach that math, you're not going to sit there and scratch your head for five minutes figuring out. You've got to go to the next one. Because you've got to get through as many as you can. So just doing things like that. So we do have plans for what we're going to do to move our kids forward in the long term. But we do have some work to do. So we're going to own that. We're not where we want to be. But we're going to continue moving forward. So, and I know our kids will get there, because they're knocking out of the park with everything else, right? So, okay. Questions for me on any of those things?
Questions? Karen?
First of all, just want to compliment you for raising the bar. Because the kids are definitely rising to the challenge, and so I think that's huge. And I appreciate the struggle with the ACT, because I remember it vividly, and it was awful. And even though you're drilled in all those things all the time, it's learning how to take the test.
Yeah.
So I just applaud you. Thank you.
I'd like to echo what Karen said. Congratulations on what you're doing. I've never been a fan of those kinds of tests. I took them too, and, you know. But I'll go back to my horse, which, if it hasn't died already, I'll probably put it in its grave at this point. My mother used to say to me, and I not only took Spanish, I took French and Latin. I can't speak any of them, particularly Latin for some reason. But she said to me, "The root of the verb education comes from the Latin 'educo,' which literally translated in the English means to lead out." She must have said that to me a million times. It seemed like it, at least at the time. So what you're trying to do is lead this out of the kids. And I agree with Karen. The greatest thing is to challenge them, challenge them, challenge them. They want to be challenged. I wanted to be challenged. I think everybody in this room is smart enough to have wanted to be challenged when they were young. And we should continue that. Thank you.
Just kind of a broad question. What do you say when people say, "Do I really need to go to college, or should I go to college?" What's your answer?
I'm actually asked that quite a bit by students and families. And my answer to that is, it really, there are so many wonderful opportunities for students who are interested in the current technical education paths that we have, that require highly skilled employees that necessarily need to have your traditional college. So to me, it's a matter of matching the students and what the students' interests are and what their passions are, so that they'll follow through on their end. And again, we're so fortunate in Carson City. I've been in two different districts, and this is the second school I've been the principal at. To have the offerings that we have in the current technical education field for our students, it's extraordinary. And then all the partnerships that we have with our business partners and getting our students out into the community. So to me, it is, what is your goal? What is it that you're passionate about? And how can we mesh these things together? College is great for anyone who's enthusiastic about it. And once, as a parent of three, I have two sons and a daughter. My boys, they've been struggling through. My oldest is going to be a seven-year college grad. I beat it into him, and he's going to go to college. I think I did him a disservice, I'm going to be honest with you. It was always, "You're going to go to college, you're going to college." And I'm looking at that kid and thinking, "You might have been a better technical skills kind of a student that would have really flourished in that." So I think we have to open up our opinion of what is worthwhile for students to do and accomplish when they leave us. And it's not always college or the university. So again, if we can match what they're good at, what they're passionate about, and help them find that pathway, then that's what we need to go for. Because they can make some really good money in those, you know, the welding and manufacturing and in those fields, construction, which we know we're in desperate need of. So that's what I tell them. You know, take your passions and see what are you going to be happy doing? So...
I think that's a great question, Mayor. You could send them to talk to me. Because as you know, I didn't go to college. And I can explain to them the excruciatingly long road they set themselves on for the rest of their lives if they don't go to college. I also agree with you on keeping an open mind with our children between the trades and college, though. Because I didn't go to college. I have three kids, two graduated from UNR, and one went to a trade school. And my son that went to the trade school makes more money than my son that has a master's degree.
That's right.
So, and it's an honorable career, and there's a huge need for it. So, you know, we do have to balance it and not, college isn't for everybody, but we should, at the same time, encourage those that can and should go to college to do that so they don't take the road I did.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you, Brad.
I would like to just add real quick. I'm Jose Delphin, Associate Superintendent for the Carson City School District. How lucky we are to have Mrs. Tasha Fuson leading Carson High. She has been nothing but a great, I think, one of the best hires we've had. And I said it to her today privately, but now I'm doing it publicly just to see if she blushes more. But certainly, she has been such a great spokeswoman and leader for Carson High and upping the rigor for all academics, for all our kids. And I just want to also thank her for really breaking down some complicated stuff that educators just are frustrated with day in and day out, that makes it very simple for us to look at why the data, the way, why the data is the way it is. Also want to call your attention now to those 17 states. Some of them have a lot more experience with ACT than Nevada does. We're new to the game. I came from Maryland where SAT was required, not ACT. We were tested and everything, ASVAB, you name it. But it seemed like we were always being tested when I was growing up. And I agree with Mr. John, I can't see your last name there, that Latin is tough. As a little Catholic student at Mass, it was always "Spirit to Santos," and that's all I can remember. And I was going somewhere else if I didn't do it the right way. But anyway, thank you, Tasha, for your leadership.
What was the school graduation rate, again?
For the class of 2017, 93.2% to be precise.
Joe?
Yeah, just real quick to kind of maybe piggyback on what Brad said. You know, when I come into the schools and I talk to the kids, you get, I kind of prompt that question, really. You know, I try to remind the kids that, you know, a lot of times, we push for college, but it isn't for everybody. But I try to remind them, they have a lot of choices. And what they think they want to do today may not be what they want to do tomorrow. And so I kind of remind them, keep your options open. And I think what, kind of the summation of this meeting tonight, really, when we talk about the school district's success, are options. You know, we have a lot of options for these kids, from the kids who, you know, the day they enter kindergarten, struggle or don't even speak the language, to the kids who are excelling and getting into the, you know, the gate programs. Then as they get older, you know, we talked about music, you know, all the different options they have there. And then when you get into high school, you have the standard track, you have the Honors AP track, you have the Jump Star track. We have CTE. There's just, my point is, there's something really for everybody. And that's why I think we're seeing, it's the hard work of our administration, the hard work of our teachers and our students, but equal to that are the options we have for these kids. And it's thanks to the, not just the district, but the community as a whole. We really have some amazing partners that have brought every year more options to these students. And I really think that's certainly a contributing factor to what we're seeing.
I mean, it looks to me like, you know, all the options that you've got there really begs for kids to have access to a counselor to help them make those decisions on what track they're going to go down to. Are we okay on that level? Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Trustee Cassiope said never, which, in response to your question, do we have enough counselors? The one thing that our current program requires is that all of our staff members take an active role in mentoring students. And some of that happens with our community partners as well. And so, again, while they may not have that formal counselor title, we have some tremendous staff members who play that role, as do our parents. And we're very fortunate in our community with who interacts with our students.
I'd just like to weigh in, because my contact is with the Greenhouse Project and the Ag program. And the kids that are in those leadership programs and they're involved are incredible. It's amazing. And it is the teachers on the ground working with them that really encourage that. And then the interaction, as you say, with the other entities that they interface with that have really made them outstanding students. So, thank you.
So one of the, you know, as a former elementary teacher in the town, a lot of those students are now graduating high school, and they're at this age where they're able to really articulate their experiences and their interests. And I think that the discussion about whether college is or isn't for some students, one of the things we have to remember is that for first-generation college students, students living in poverty, they think it's not a possibility. And so I think one of the things our school does a really good job about is helping them see those options. And when I talk to those kids, they tell me what their options are. And so I think that for some of us, we're thinking, "Well, college either is or isn't for us." But for a kid that's never had somebody in their family go to college, they don't know. And so it's an important perspective to keep in mind.
And I'll just piggyback on that and do a shout-out to Western Nevada with our Jump Start program. It's not always been fun over the past four years figuring out those details with them. I'm just going to say that. But through it all, the one thing that has always impressed me about WNC is that they are very flexible, they're passionate, they want to work with our kids, they want to provide those opportunities for our kids. And they go out of their way to really try to be active members of our school community and get the information out to kids about the programs that they do have. For instance, the Nevada Promise Scholarship. I would like to say we're probably one of the first schools that heard about it, because John Kinkila, who's unfortunately retiring, I'm going to miss him a lot, but he made sure he came out. He was promoting that, talking to all of our kids. Our kids knew it before it even hit the newspaper. And WNC's goal was that they wanted to themselves take up at least three-quarters of the funds for the entire state for our kids. And that's a great attitude to have when it comes to making sure our kids have the resources that they need to get in there. So again, it's been a journey, but I'm so impressed with their drive to serve our community and serve our kids, truly.
Just looking at the AP scores and seeing how well Carson High School performs against not only the state of Nevada, but nationally and globally. And keep in mind that Nevada still has a per-pupil allotment that is significantly lower than the nation, than anywhere else in the nation. And so you look at what Carson City School District is doing, when you consider how little funding there is. There's been increases in the last couple of years in categorical...and categorically in...for English-language learners, and our grants department in the district has done a great job in applying for those grants. But there is a real need to, if we want to continue to move education and to improve it, to make sure that we fund education and we increase the base funding, so that you don't have to withdraw from the general fund to support the special ed program. You don't have to take withdrawals from the general fund to, you know, that's how we're going to have...we have to pay for the school resource officers from the general fund. So if we're going to have more counselors, if we're going to have more AP offerings, more curriculum like that, that's something that needs to always be a consideration of people in this community and people when you're looking to it, is how can we increase the funding to education to help make sure that we're meeting all the needs of all the students?
Well, Tasha, thank you very much for the presentation tonight, but thank you for what you do for our kids. You don't have to all rush forward. Okay? I've seen no public comment.
Let me just say, I thought it was a fascinating meeting. I'm always... I'm always fascinated by what we learn, you know, because as we started out, as I started out, you know, building a community, a true community, not just a collection of neighborhoods or ethnic groups, requires a lot of effort and a lot of people to coordinate your efforts, so that you don't build silos and things like that in your community. And I think, you know, what I'm hearing tonight is just some wonderful things about kids, about how we build one community, and I emphasize the word "one." So you know what? I know it's been a long day for us at the board. We've been, you know, going to the attic since 8:00 or 8:30 this morning. But these things are...these are important for us to know, and it's important for you to let us know if there's something we could be doing at the board level to facilitate and foster. I mean, we can build infrastructure, you know, we can talk about those things, but you're the ones who populate the infrastructure. So if there's things we can do and do better for you, let us know.
And I would just like to say, after being at the NIDA board meeting all day, congratulations on your fortitude. This is incredible to go from 8:00 in the morning to 8:30, because I left at 7:30 to get to Reno and got here. So I just, knowing that you guys think that this is so important is great, and I think that says a lot about our community. And just on a real quick note, there is no 5A. Carson State in the 4A North, the state football still goes through Gorman.
Don't you brag about yourself, too? Don't you get a new job?
I'm president of the Nevada Association of School Boards this year. So, yeah, we're pretty happy about that, too.
All right. Good bragging.
Well, Mr. Mayor, supervisors, I think this was a great meeting, and it's always enjoyable just to sit down as a community and just say, we're good, can we make it better? And everybody's open to doing that. So thank you very much. And Board of Trustees, we all had a good time. So anyway, with that, I think we can just adjourn this. Or you have a motion? I remember on the board, we had a motion for adjournment. School Board, we just...
I just say, without objection, we adjourned.
Okay. So moved. Okay. We're out of here.